Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to today's meeting of the Liverpool City Council's Virtual Planning Committee. Before I hand over to the Chair, just a few brief practical housekeeping announcements to run through to members in terms of voting. I'll go through you each in turn to confirm your details at the start. So taking through each you in turn on screen. councillor Juarez, can you see and hear us clearly?
Yes, I can, Michael.
Thank you. councillor Byrne, welcome. Can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Thank you. councillor Conception, can you hear us okay?
That's fine.
Thank you, Tony. councillor Kennedy, can you hear us okay? Just to mute your mic, Malcolm.
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Thank you, Malcolm. councillor Maddock, can you hear us okay?
Oh, good, Michael, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Thompson, can you hear us okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
That's perfect. And councillor McLinden, can you hear us okay? We'll come back to Richard when we go through the various items of business. Moving on to the actual Chair's note for today. As I indicated before, councillor McLinden is joining us today. And indeed councillor McLinden is in new appointment to the committee, replacing councillor Anthony Lovell, who reverts to an alternate. So the Chair may wish to say a few words in due course. In terms of apologies for absence today, we have apologies from councillor Dave Cummings. No further apologies have been received. So moving on, do we have any declarations of interests to report at all from members? Good. Microphone.
Let's go here.
If a member with any interest would like to unmute your microphone, declare now, please, if you could. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Tony, go ahead.
Yes, could I declare an on pecuniary interest in item 6 Alderhey Children's Hospital as a founder member of the Friends of Springfield Park and a current Chair of the community of Springfield Park?
That's fine, thank you, Tony. Any other members have any declarations today?
Just a question, Michael. On agenda item 11, HMO 7 Persons, 52 Woodlands Road. It's just round the corner from where I live. So I'm just inquiring whether I do have an interest in that.
Just for purposes of clarity, councillor Kennedy, can you just confirm what sort of distance you're talking about from your actual property?
Probably about, I don't know, 100, 200 metres.
I would say that's sufficiently distant, councillor Kennedy, to be too remote an interest.
Okay.
Okay, with that in mind, we'll move to our next item, which is minutes of our last virtual meeting. If I can refer members to pages 4 to 22 of your agenda. Our last meeting was held on the 23rd of September. Have any questions or comments from members? Otherwise, could you nod your assent in agreement to the minutes concerned? Thank you, everyone. That's much appreciated. Now, I can confirm that we have no urgent business to report. So I can invite the Chair to make a few comments before we deal with our first items of business. Chair?
I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting today. And to welcome on board again councillor Richard MacLinden, who was a member of our planning committee a couple of years ago. And to thank councillor Anthony Lovell for his contribution, which now he's actually had to go back to work and not virtually. He's going to find it just too difficult to spare the time to do the virtual meetings with us now. But aside from that, having a new member on board who's quite experienced, I think things are going to carry on hopefully to run smoothly. Thanks, everybody. And I think we're ready for the agenda item 4, which is land at the junction of St Anne Street and Fox Street in Liverpool 3 Everton Ward. And this presentation will be displayed showing some of the ideas and visuals for the proposal. And the architects and agent for the application are present. And once they conclude their presentation, are available for any questions if required. They're coming up the presentation now, please.
Thank you, Chair. That should be coming on screen now for everyone's benefit. For two speakers, the architect and agent will actually mute their microphones and talk us through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. It's Colin Williams, I'm the agent for the application. What we'll do in the usual way is the architect will take you through the slides and highlight some of the key aspects of the scheme. And then following that, I will do a brief summary of the key planning issues that are raised in the report. Thank you.
First slide, please.
So we've got Adam Morgan now showing details of the presentation. Carry on, Adam.
Thank you. So yeah, first slide is just identifying the location. It's on the corner of St Anne and Fox Streets. It's opposite St Anne Police Station on your way to or from Grady Market. And this application is largely a refresh of the permission obtained in September 2016. It's the same kind of configuration and scale. It's three residential blocks surrounding a courtyard. And it comprises 300 residential units, a mixture of one and two beds with a few studios. And the main change really is that we've reduced the number of studios. So we feel we've improved that mix, really. Next slide, please. And this is just a site layout plan, just to demonstrate the access and egress into the site. And you'll see the blue circles are the points at which bins are stored and will be collected. So there's a vehicle route to the site to facilitate that. And there is a slight increase in parking for this scheme on the two previous consents. And so, yeah, and it's a similar layout. And all I say, all we've done is we've improved the mix. So it's actually a reduced number of residential units around the same kind of blocks. And yet, basically, it's a refresh of that original application. Next slide, please. And this just demonstrates the typical floor plans of each, all of which have been properly investigated by structural engineers, mechanical engineers and fire engineers. And so it meets all parts of the building regulations. And we have an 87% provision of apartments that can be adapted to meet Part M, I think it's M43 of the building regulations. And what that graphic at the bottom demonstrates is how a typical apartment in that 87% can be converted. The mix of units is 143 one beds, 136 two beds and just 21 studios. The parking provision is 125 spaces of 42%, 10% of which are accessible and appropriately located. 10% of the spaces have electric vehicle charging points. And we have just over 50% cycle provision. Next slide, please. Oh, that's it. Oh, one previous, top. And then this just summarizes basically what we've done since those two previous consents that are noted at the top. So it's largely a return to the original application of 2016, where it was kind of two thirds brick, one third aluminium cladding. And I just want to show everyone that the specification of the aluminium cladding meets the regulation that stated there, the A2S1, which is that kind of post Grenfell regulation. So we've got that sorted. There's a range of projecting balconies. We thought a return to that would just animate the street. Streets seem a little bit better. And yet, it's a similar sort of massing to that consent. And as I mentioned, it's an improved mix. So the end developer has had quite a lot of interest actually in this. And it was obvious that there was more demand for the larger style of units. That's what we've designed it to, basically. And then just final slide is a range of visuals, just identifying the three blocks. And that's it, really?
Thank you, Adam. Can I come in now, Chair?
Yes, certainly can.
Thank you very much. Your report sets out obviously all the main key issues and starts with the principle of development, which the officer quite rightly pointed out. The previous schemes dealt with the policy of E1, which is in the UDP. And he highlights that the NPPF encourages the way that you would deal with alternative development applications. Clearly, the council's done that in a very positive way. So that's obviously set the principle for us. As the architect has set out, it's pretty much the same scale of development, three and five and eight stories. It's actually reduced numbers. And we're in greater in terms of parking provision. And he is hopefully taking you through the inclusive access points, which are raised by your officer as well. I do know there's been an objection from the MOT garage. He's raised pretty similar points, I think, that were raised previously about the access on Bow Street and Juvenile Place. He seems to suggest that these are unadopted highways, whether or not they're adopted highways. And the scheme has been approved to allow vehicles to come through Juvenile Place and to exit onto Fox Streets, with Bow Street being used as pedestrian access. So this scheme doesn't change anything from previous schemes, the way the access has been dealt with. And it's just to confirm really that the points that have been raised by the objector have been previously addressed by the council and are not changed within this scheme. So I just wanted to make comments about bin storage. That was an issue that was raised by your Waste Management Officer. The layout plan showed you the indications where the siting of bin stores are. Within the buildings, there'll be bin storage areas in the ground floor. And these are accessible by the stair and lift course to allow for, again, great benefit in terms of inclusive access as well. In terms of where we come to at the end, it's summarized in the report about the way that the office is taking through issues of scale. Section 106 contributions, £560,000, which are confirmed. But also, the scheme delivers on major regeneration benefits. And that's probably those back in 2016 scheme. Now, this scheme is deliverable. You've now got a developer who will come on and deliver this development. It will create a significant number of jobs, investment, council tax and new homes bonus. So together with all of them and the housing mix delivering housing need, that then tells you that this is sustainable development. And applying the principles of sustainable development, paragraph level of the NPPF, as your officer report quite rightly points out, would indicate that the application should be approved. So I hope you will approve it and take account of all information that's in the report. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Colin. Well, that would have been my point that if approved today, obviously, the planning committee likes to see these developments go ahead as soon as possible. But I understand from what you've just said that that is something that now will happen.
Yes.
I'll invite councillor Tony Conception to speak now, please. Would you like to go ahead and unmute, Tony?
Right, there. Could I ask you to hear? Adam, in relation to the waste collection, on page 28 of our report, it says that officers strongly advise that you install underground bin system. But just to clarify, you've not chosen to do that. Why? And also, you've identified four bin collection sites. And then the report also says that we need 96 euro bins. And that would mean 24 bins at each site. Is that correct? Are at least 50% of those recycling bins? And how are you going to promote recycling and deetair flight tipping? Thank you.
Okay. Well, yes, the adequate provision has been made. And the adequate provision has been made for the allowance of recycling. So that is all there, I can absolutely guarantee that. The reason we haven't gone underground is, to be completely honest, that would eat into the viability of the scheme. There's no need for it, really. And where they're positioned at ground level, they're quite discreet as well. So they're not, obviously, they're not street facing. And they are in appropriate locations that are easily accessed from the internal vehicle route into the courtyard. What was, sorry, what was the other question?
You need to have at least 50% of the bins. And the way, it says in the report that you'll need a total of 96 euro bins. And if you've got four sites, you would have 24 bins at each site. And at least 50% of those would have to be recycling bins. How are you going to promote recycling? How will residents, tenants know how to recycle their waste?
Ah, right, yeah, so, yeah. So I'd say that the provision is there, there are two large bin stores in the largest block, which accommodates 60, 70% of the 96. And then two smaller bin stores in the two smaller blocks. And they'll be clearly designated in the actual, because we've started detailed design. And there's an element of the general waste bin store needs to have a separate ventilation system to a recycle bin store. So they're actually going to be separated off anyway. So they'll be clearly identified as which is which. And, yeah, the residents will be encouraged to use it.
Is it going to be 96 bins? What's the total on each site? You've got four bin collection sites. How many bins are on each site?
Yeah, so 96, hold on. So, hang on. So there's 60 in block A.
Right.
And then it said 96, so. Yeah, and then 18 in the other two.
How many, sorry?
And then 18 in the other two blocks to meet that 96.
What's the size of the larger euro bins? It says that you could have 1100.
Yeah, so.
What's the size of them? The big one?
Yeah, 1100 litres. 1100 litres is the allowance.
It said you should have 96. You've only got 78.
Now, if I could intervene, he has accounted, hasn't he? It's two sets of 18, Tony, two smaller bin stores, and then the big bin stores got 60.
Yes, and the larger of the 60, it's split across two bin stores within the larger dogleg block.
Okay, Chair. I was just making the point that obviously, waste collection and recycling is very important. So we need to make sure that anybody who lives there has got the adequate resources to recycle their waste. Thank you.
Yeah, yes. Can I just make a quick comment? The sites and the residents will be given information about obviously managing the waste and recycling. It's absolutely crucial to the way that the development will be managed. The scheme in terms of the bin locations is still subject to condition three, which is listed in your conditions on the report. And it's very much similar to the schemes that have been previously approved. So the way that the bin management will work is very much alongside the council's curbside collection programme anyway. So we don't expect any changes from that. The residents will be given the proper information to make sure they know how to access bins, when they'll be done and how to recycle. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Colin and Adam. And I hope that answers the question, Tony. I can't see any other questions being indicated. So unless anybody interrupts me, I'm going to now invite councillor Jane Corbett to address the committee. Elaine, would you like to unmute?
Thank you for giving me the chance to address the committee. Okay, so this is the third time this has come back to committee. And the same concerns I had are still there, all the original ones. And changing residential land to, sorry, changing industrial land to residential land is a real concern. It's one of the few areas of the city where we've actually got close to the city centre, industrial land, which is now getting eaten away dramatically by turning it into residential, that doesn't actually benefit the local community that is existing there at the moment. And there's going to be overdevelopment of that area of Everton with a very high concentration of apartments. That is a real concern. That links directly up with the car parking issue. Thank you for putting in about half of the numbers that we need. However, we've already got a major car parking issue in the area with roads getting semi-blocked, people not being able to get through, and this will exacerbate that. The other issue on the highways, which is in the report, is raised about the air quality assessment and the existing poor air quality in the area. And environmental health have made the comment that this will get worse. In terms of the bin stores and the access to the bin stores, it looks like they come through Juvenile Place. And both Juvenile Place and Bow Street, where they've got DKW Autos and TIRT, both those businesses are going to be severely undermined. DKW, you've got it as the. Not be able to have that road being able to be used. This will undermine that completely, and therefore the business is likely to close. We can't lose any more businesses from Everton. And major regeneration, I don't think it's going to bring in major regeneration. I walked past again the other day, the signage says Ellisus, and it has Robbie Fowler's picture on it. And it promotes how near it is, how near the flats are to Anfield Stadium. What we could find is the majority of those flats are just bought and rented out when it comes to match days or events. That won't help build a sustainable community. And my concern as well, one of the presentations, presenters mentioned the viability of the scheme if you won't put the underground bins in. Are you using it as fractional investments as your investment or similar? If you are, that increases the risk of the scheme not being able to be delivered fully. And that means that we could end up with what local people call tinfoil city on both sides of Fox Street. We already have it on Fox Street Village, where you've got the plywood or whatever wood they think they've used and what looks like tinfoil on the outside of it, which is absolutely atrocious and completely stalled scheme. We could end up with similar on this scheme, unless it's properly funded already upfront and not being based on some form of fractional investment. If that is, to mitigate that risk, I would suggest, Chair, that the section 106 is paid either in full or 80% at the signing of the legal agreement. And that would mitigate that risk and show that there is genuine investment in there. In terms of air quality, car parking, section 106, signing the agreement, I think that's all. My only other concern is that, again, in terms of residential amenity, we've got two-storey high properties. We've got the flats facing onto St Anne Street down the side by Richmond Row. And all of those flats are just being surrounded, quite low-level flats. All of them are being surrounded now by blocks upon blocks. And then we've also got the police station opposite St Joseph's on the other side. The residents are feeling completely hemmed in, and they are being hemmed in, by an over-concentration of apartment blocks, which are being built for profit, not for purpose. Now, you can have both, but this looks like the balance is around profit, not purpose. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Corbett. Are there any questions? So I'd like to hand over now to our case officer. And I am expecting to have some input from our highways officer as well, because there have been concerns expressed about the roads surrounding this development. So can I invite you, John, now to present to the planning committee, please?
Thank you, and good morning, Chair, members of the committee and members of the public. My name is John Hayes. I am the team leader for Development Control Matters in the north of Liverpool. Jay, you've had a presentation there, which has gone through some of the particular issues. You've got a full presentation, sorry, a full report in front of you as well. I think it's probably worth me just going through the report briefly, pointing you to some of the history on the site. And then I'll try and address some of the issues raised by both councillor Conception and by councillor Corbett. So obviously, you're aware of the site. It's a former light craft site. It is part of a wider industrial area, albeit it's an area that is in transition. And there have been a number of residential schemes, some of which have not been successfully completed, but others certainly have and are now successful. In particular, the, what I know is the City Point Development on the opposite side. And there's some further development going on around Glegg Street and Iliad Street. So in terms of the principal chair, obviously, as councillor Corbett has pointed out, this is within an area that's allocated for industrial purposes, both within the UDP and indeed the draft local plan. I think it's fair to say that in terms of the draft local plan, the area is washed over quite comprehensively for employment purposes. But nonetheless, it does actually include areas that have already been developed by residential development. So I think we need to be cautious in how we apply that employment area designation. I think it's important to also note that in terms of that draft local plan, it will have had a planning permission at the point that the policy and that area was allocated. So these are the kind of issues that will need to be picked up through the local plan inquiry. So in terms of your assessment and the report, Chair, we've assessed it primarily against policy E1 in the UDP. That is the draft, sorry, that is the statutory plan for development management purposes and also material considerations such as the NPPF. And your officers have included, as we did back in 2016 and 2017, that the principle of residential development on this site is considered appropriate. We've had particularly regarding coming to that decision to some subtle changes in the NPPF, which include this agent of change principle. And the agent of change principle is there to ensure that the introduction of new uses does not impede other existing businesses in the area. So the same kind of themes that you've explored at places like the Baltic. And again, your officers are satisfied that this can be successfully accommodated without harm to surrounding businesses. In terms of the design, the scale and the layout, again, you'll see from your report and from the presentation that this is very, very similar to the previous consents that have been granted in relation to this site. It is three blocks up between five and eight stories. The number of units has now been reduced to a total of 300. The parking has been increased from previous schemes. So I think we've now got about four, just over 40% parking ratio. I think it's 125 spaces. And then, as you've seen from the presentation, a number of the elevations have been changed, the reintroduction of a number of balconies and so on. Your officers are, your officers note the concerns of our urban design specialist. But I don't think the concerns are particularly about the design, the scale and the form of development. They essentially relate to the sort of architectural external treatment. And obviously, that is perhaps a little bit more subjective. And I think on balance, your officers are happy that the proposal is acceptable in urban design and visual terms. In terms of highway matters, Chair, there's obviously quite an extensive narrative within your agenda papers. There's no particular concerns raised by colleagues in highways, particularly in relation to the car parking. Clearly, one of the major points that has been picked up by DKW Autos and has been addressed through that presentation is concern about the use of Bow Street and Juvenile Street as the access points. These issues were raised back in 2016 and 2017, when the previous applications were considered. The council's view is that these are adopted. We have searched our records, highway records. There is no evidence that these are unadopted. And all the evidence points to them being part of the network of adopted streets in and around that area. The second issue raised by DKW Autos in relation to land ownership, again, there's been no evidence submitted to us that there is anything to suggest that the site is in control of the applicants. And so we've assessed the application on that basis. If necessary, my colleague from highways can come in and talk a little bit more about that. In terms of residential amenity, again, noting the concerns of councillor Corbett, your officers are satisfied that given the scale of it and the surrounding context, the relationship with existing flats and residential properties in the area is satisfactory and would not give rise to any concerns in terms of overlooking and interface distances. I do recognise the point being made about the concerns of residents feeling sort of hemmed in by the scale of these blocks. But equally, it's considered to be a city fringe area where this scale is appropriate. Again, these issues have been discussed in different parts of the city. Marybone, for example, comes to mind. But I think that there is a scale of development now, particularly on these sort of frontage sites fronting St Anne Street, that has been identified and considered an appropriate one for this fringe location. In terms of inclusive design, again, that's been picked up in the presentation. It is largely M42 compliance. And then in terms of part M43, you've heard through the presentation that a lot of these units will be adaptable. And then in relation to section 106 contributions, you'll see from the report that we're asking for a complete section 106 contribution for both public art, street trees and public open space. Again, picking up on councillor Corbett's point around fractional investment and the payment on commencement of, sorry, on signing of the legal agreement. I'm not sure that will be reasonable. I understand the point being made. However, the method of financing a development ultimately, unfortunately, is not something for us as a planning authority to have regard to. In terms of when that payment is made, I actually think 50% on commencement of development and 50% prior to first occupation is reasonable and is certainly consistent with many of the other large residential schemes throughout the city that has been considered by this planning committee. Just picking up on councillor Conception's point around bin storage. Again, I think the architects have provided an answer to that in relation to the number of bins to be provided and the location of those bin storage. As was pointed out by the planning consultant, there is a condition requiring further details of that bin storage area. I would also add that the architects and the planning consultants have had direct communication with colleagues in street scene to ensure that what they're doing suits their requirements. But if members require some further reassurance along this particular point, then I'm happy to suggest a further condition that requires a waste management plan to be submitted and approved, and that would then provide details of how the waste is to be managed, days of collection, the split between recycling and so on. I think these are matters that are being addressed by the architects as part of their detailed design moving forward. But certainly it is something that we can pick up through a further condition if members feel that that's appropriate. I think that picks up all the points that have been raised by the councillors and by the objector. But of course, if I missed anything, I'm more than happy to respond to any further questions that members may have. Thank you.
Yes, as ever, there's always the opportunity for members to explore issues by asking further questions. So are there any further questions? So Malcolm, councillor Kennedy.
Check my mic. Yeah, my mic's on.
Yes, I can hear you clearly, Malcolm.
Good, good. There are a number of issues within the report that I just want to check have been taken up. Highways asked for electric charging points. And I just wondered whether that, I couldn't confirm in my reading that that had been that had been taken up and whether in fact the electric charging points could be used by other people, presumably at a cost. The major queries seem to be around about air quality, and councillor Corbett raised that. So I'd like some further clarification from the planning officer on that. It's obviously a very serious concern, not just for the residents of the flats, but the existing residents who live in the area. And but I think councillor McLendon might take up the question of inclusive design. It requested the report, inclusive design officer requested that accessible apartments are located closer to the lifts. And there was one mention in the report that the size of the doors didn't meet the required size at the entrances. And then there were questions about the reception counters and recommendations made by the inclusive design officer there. So have all of these been, have all of these been taken up?
I'll hand over to you, John, because I'm sure you know the answers on this. And I know there are going to be electric charging points.
There are indeed, Chair. So apologies if that isn't perhaps as clear as it should be within the report, Chair. But yes, in relation to the electric charging points, one of the approved planning documents does include those five charging points that has been requested by highway colleagues, so that is being addressed. In terms of air quality, I think this is an interesting area for consideration. The issue, the question of air quality in the planning process is more about whether the development of itself contributes more to a deterioration in air quality. It doesn't really address the issue of existing air quality and the introduction of residential properties in areas which have poor air quality. I mean, if that was the case, then we would have some serious challenges in delivering any housing across the city, given that most of the city falls below the standards that are required. And so the air quality information is largely about whether or not this development adds further to the low air quality that already exists in the area. There was a report that has been submitted by the applicants in response to environmental health colleague's request. Environmental health colleagues have looked at that report and are now satisfied. And so they will be considering whether or not, for example, the introduction of additional cars within that area is going to contribute further to a diminution of that air quality. They're not necessarily looking at the introduction of the residential development within an existing area close to major thoroughfares. So hopefully that addresses that point. And then I think in relation to accessibility, I might, if it's appropriate, Chair, invite the architect back on this point. Certainly, again, if I haven't made it clear, there has been a significant work done by the architects in relation to the initial response by our inclusive design officer, and a number of amendments were made to the scheme following on from the initial points raised. I think my understanding is they've largely been addressed. The main outstanding issue was in relation to part M34, which is in relation to inclusive, sorry, wheelchair accessible, sorry, part M43, which is in relation to wheelchair accessible units. Again, for the reasons set out in the report, Chair, we can only give limited weight to this particular part of the policy, given that it is a policy that is being contested through the local plan inquiry, and obviously it is not policy at the moment. But as you heard in the presentation, the units throughout the proposed development, a lot of those units are potentially adaptable. And because of that, I think your officers are satisfied that on balance issues of inclusive design have been largely addressed. I'm not sure if you want to bring the architects in, Chair, in relation to the inclusive design.
John has indicated he wants to come in, so when you've concluded, I'll invite him in.
I concluded that, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. So Adam Morgan, can you come in now, please, about that, if you would?
Yeah. So that concern was raised by John during the process. And if I can be so bold, some of them were incorrect. In the width of doors, we always have an entrance door minimum of, you know, over a metre wide, basically, to provide that minimum 850mm clear width. All corridors are 1500mm wide to allow adequate turning for wheelchairs. Every entrance has a 300mm leading edge to allow easy access for wheelchair users. And on the presentation, I highlighted one of the units that can be upgraded. So it already meets M42 of the regs. And I identified how it can be upgraded to M43, which provides things like a wheelchair transfer space, additional storage, and how the bathroom can be upgraded to meet the requirements of part M43. On the topic of the reception desk, there isn't currently one allocated. That is something that's being explored as part of the detailed design. And if one is to be included, it will meet those regulations. We wouldn't be allowed to open the building otherwise, so, you know, you can rest assured there.
Thank you, Adam. Are there any other questions? Well, in that case, I'd like to move, a recommendation as amended be approved. Is that agreed? Councillor Conception.
I was just going to say that the officer, John, did say that an additional condition could be added in relation to the waste strategy, a waste management plan. Given that there are over 600 multi-occupancy bedrooms, I think that would be helpful. Can we include that in your recommendation, please?
Yes, that would be acceptable, councillor Conception. I think that's a good point. Thank you. We will have an additional condition in this recommendation that I'm asking you to agree.
Chair, before we move to the recommendation, I believe councillor Marrett also has indicated to ask a question as well.
Councillor Marrett. Would you like to, Billy? Yeah, I can hear you now.
Are we going to hear a people, are we going to hear a people from highway?
Well, what particular point do you want them to cover? Because John did cover the points about the, we don't think the roads there are unadopted.
Yeah, I still like to hear.
Did you have an additional question you wanted anyways to answer?
Just parking issues that John said maybe highways can come on and say, you know, about this. I thought Andy might come on and give an idea about parking and everything in the area.
Well, Andy did cover quite a lot in the report, and I have actually asked for us to move to the vote now. So Michael, would you like to tell us whether you think this is appropriate at this stage?
Chair, in the interest of ensuring all the issues are fully explored, it seems reasonable to bring the highways officer into comments, if that's busy members.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Andy Dingwall, Highways Development Control Team Leader. I mean, most of the points have already been covered by John fairly comprehensively, but so alls I'm going to say is pretty much a recap of what he said before. First of all, the access arrangements, the access arrangements being proposed here for vehicles and for pedestrians are no different than the access arrangements that were proposed for previously approved schemes. So there's no changes there. You know, I can confirm categorically that the two streets, Juvenile and Bow Street, are both adopted highways are present. So there are vehicle access rights and pedestrian access rights along there. You know, having regard for the objections from the adjacent businesses, the assertion that they're private roads is not correct. So that pretty much clears that point up. And the next issue is in relation to car park, and there's 125 car parking spaces being proposed for 300 apartments, which in this location, you know, it's a fairly accessible location, reasonable walk distance and cycle distance to the city centre. And we think the level of parking being proposed is appropriate and is acceptable for that area, given the makeup of the apartments as well. A lot of them are smaller, one-bed and two-bed, one-bed and studio apartments. And there's also a really good level of secure cycle parking across the site. And as John mentioned before, there's electric vehicle charging points proposed for six of the car parking spaces within that car parking area, which gives the opportunity for people with electric vehicles, obviously, to charge up overnight. And just a further point in relation to car parking. The city council has commissioned a study of car parking within the city centre and within areas that surround the city centre. And our consultants, Amy, have concluded that study now and have identified that there are pockets within this particular area where there are, if you like, competing demands for car parking from residents and also from businesses in the area. And it's reasonable to assume that we would have some aspiration in the future to introduce some parking controls in this area. But at this stage, we've not gone forward with any consultation. We've not worked through the detail of what those proposals would look like. Nor have we identified the funding that would be required to introduce those proposals. But it is something that is, you know, very much on our radar, something that we're aware of. And we look to introduce some parking controls in the future.
Uncle Andy. Councillor Marrett, did you have any follow-up on that? Okay, thanks, Billy. So can we return to Michael Jones to conduct the vote now, please?
Thank you, Chair. And as indicated previously, the Chair has moved a valid motion to approve the application as amended, subject to various provisions and additions to conditions, including the additional conditions specified of the waste management arrangements. So take into account that resolution, Chair. Your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception. Thank you. Councillor Hanson.
Councillor Kennedy. Michael, I didn't come to, come on back on from an appointment. I'm halfway through this item, so I am unable to vote. Also, I need to leave at 12 o'clock, Chair, if you object, so my apologies.
No, thank you, councillor Hanson.
Quite right, councillor Hanson, and thank you for that.
Councillor Conception, can you just reiterate your vote, please? I didn't hear it clearly previously, just for the purpose of clarity. Just reiterate it, please. It's breaking up, I'm afraid.
Can you hear me now, Mike?
Yes, I can now, Tony.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you. Sorry, it wasn't clear earlier. Thank you. Councillor Kennedy. Councillor Kennedy, can you hear us?
Sorry, my mic was off. Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor McLendon.
Hi, Mike. As you're aware, my email's been crashing, so I don't know, I didn't see all of the presentation. So can I vote?
That noted, that's fine, councillor McLendon, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Marrett.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Forrest.
Agreed.
Please, Murna, it's not clear.
Agreed.
Thank you. Just to confirm, the vote therefore of those members who were present and able to vote, it is unanimous of those members, which is therefore six members. We'll therefore move to our next item of business, Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mike. We'll move on to our next item now, which is gender item five. William Jessop Way, Prince's Dock. And on this one, we are having a presentation, but the agents and architects are here more for questions, I believe, than anything else. So can we move to the present agent, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning. My name's Ian Ford. I'm the applicant's planning consultant, and I'm pleased to introduce you to these exciting proposals for the residential development on Prince's Dock. You can see by the application site on this slide, which is currently vacant land. And it's already allocated as mixed-use development in both the current UDP local policy and the emerging local plan, and therefore is considered suitable for residential use. Although the application you are considering today is a new full planning application, this site has previously been consented for residential of similar scale. As you can see in this slide, a 97.5-metre residential development was consented in 2018. And for that, under the Liverpool Waters Outlaw And for that, under the Liverpool Waters outline consent, an even larger one hundred and ninety five metre mixed use development was proposed. This development in question today is ninety five point seven metres and proposes a similar quantum of development and massing to two thousand and eighteen consents. It has been redesigned and resubmitted to ensure the proposals are commercially viable, and the applicants, who are Peel London Property and Your Housing Group, have worked with their preferred local contractor to ensure this fifty million pound development and investment to the city can be delivered. Both applicants have a history of delivering high quality developments in the city. Additional support and documentation has also been provided to ensure that there are no pre commencement conditions attached to the decision notice. This approach has been undertaken to ensure works can commence as soon as a positive decision is made, and has also led to a much more detailed application being considered, where points which are normally conditioned have been considered as part of the determination process. This has led to no objections from council offices and statutory consultees. We have undertaken detailed pre application conversations with your planning officer and colleagues from highways, accessibility, heritage and urban design. Virtual public consultation has taken place, as well as a places matter design review. At each stage, advice has been considered and addressed in the design as it has been developed and is presented to you today in final form. In conclusion, a precedent for the principle of this development has already been set by the scheme already approved in two thousand and eighteen and previously through the Liverpool Waters outline consent. And furthermore, the proposal accords with both local and national planning policy. I'm happy to hand over now to Adam Hall, who's the managing director of Falkland Chester Hall Architects, who will set out the proposals in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the planning committee, who had allowed me to address you this morning. Could I have the next slide, please? So the site is currently vacant and adjacent to the recently completed Plaza eighteen twenty one residential development. That's the building that is on the right hand side of the proposal in the shot on your screen. As you've just heard, this proposal at ninety five point seven metres is one point eight metres lower than the consented scheme. And we believe the massing makes better use of the available footprint of the site, introducing a residence amenity podium level at level ten. Two hundred and seventy eight apartments are proposed, responding to local housing demand, as identified by the registered provider, Housing Group. And the apartments will not be for fractional sale or investment. An external roof terrace is proposed at level eleven, associated with the amenity floor. A ground floor, a commercial unit, will be proposed, catering for a variety of local companies and opportunities. Twenty two car parking spaces, including two accessible spaces, three motorcycle bays, and ninety cycle spaces are proposed, and will provide and encourage the use of sustainable local transport, the site being very close and adjacent to the city bus and rail interchange, and we believe offers the right level of sustainable development in this city centre location. Indeed, Your Highways Officer has accepted our proposal and has no comments. It's also worth noting, as illustrated on this slide, that there is a multi storey car park less than a hundred metres walking distance from the site. Next slide, please. The building design is the result of a careful analysis of the site, including adjacent developments, Plaza eighteen twenty one, and the currently being built motor scheme Lexington. And that's in order to form a cohesive skyline and public realm across this part of Liverpool Waters. Through the design process, we explored a number of alternative massing arrangements. The slide to the left shows the interface distances to the buildings to both the south and the north of the plot, and the proposed massing reflects the rhythm of buildings along William Jessop Way. At pre application stage, the massing was tested in a flipped arrangement. This was discounted, as more habitable rooms would have faced each other over more floors when compared to the proposed design. It also reduced the number of parking spaces and compromised the vehicular route in and out of the building. To potentially overcome that, the building footprint would need to be moved much closer to Plaza eighteen twenty one, and then therefore further reducing the interface distance with that building. A townscape and visual impact assessment has been undertaken examining how the building will appear on this part of the Liverpool skyline, and received no objection from Your Conservation Officers or Historic England. This massing was also subject to a daylight, sunlight and overshadowing analysis, which is included in the application, and concluded the development was acceptable according to the relevant guidelines of the British Standard for Layout, Planning and Daylight Design. Next slide, please. Sorry, it's a bit unclear on your screen there, but I'll try and explain it in words. The ground floor is orientated to address William Jessop Way, increasing the activity to Prince's Dock, with back of house areas located against the dock wall. Cycle storage is located at this ground floor level, accessible from the car park side of the building. Refuge store, which is shown green on this drawing, is located in the centre of the plan and is accessible from the car park. It includes waste and recycling and provides seventeen eleven hundred litre Euro bins, which is in accordance with Your Environmental Health Officers' standards. The design also allows for a main entrance to both William Jessop Way and from the car park. Landscaping is designed to enhance the connectivity between the city centre and Prince's Dock through the opening that's already formed in the dock boundary wall behind neighbouring developments. Wind studies have been undertaken with mitigation measures proposed to ensure movement around the landscaping is comfortable and safe. At level eleven, we provide a variety of internal amenity spaces with views in every direction over the city skyline. An external amenity space will include a raised deck terrace. Next slide, please. Again, apologies for the quality of image. The apartment mix includes forty six studios, a hundred and two one bedroom units and a hundred and two two bedroom units, with twenty eight three bedroom units. And that's all in accordance with the requirements of the identified requirement from Your Housing Group. We also include a number of fully accessible and adaptable apartments in close proximity to the lift, with views that face outwards towards the river at eleven, level at twelve and beyond. And just to confirm, I know one of the previous applicants was questioned regarding the level of accessible units. We will potentially have forty seven part M four three adaptable apartments, representing sixteen point nine per cent of our overall mix. Next slide, please. This image shows the proposed development facing south from Prince's Parade, identifying the high quality materials, including capless glazing system to the tower and a masonry cladding system for the lower block. Landscaping materials have been carefully selected in order to tie into the wider Liverpool Waters master plan. So in conclusion, this development will contribute approximately fifty million pounds of investment into the city and will create jobs and apprenticeships for the region. Our client Peel is a national developer with a proven track record of delivery, working with local community groups to develop local labour and apprenticeship schemes. Our chosen contractor, Vermont, has prepared a construction price which is fundable and is ready to commence on site later this year. Therefore, I urge members to carry your officers' recommendation for approval to ensure that the next phase of this much needed Liverpool Waters proposal can be implemented. Obviously, we welcome any questions you might have, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam. Are there any questions, Adam and Ian? Well, I can't see anybody. Oh, yes, Richard, would you like to come in with your question?
Thanks, Chair. You mentioned about the forty seven adaptable, sixteen point nine per cent adaptable rooms or properties. When you say adaptable, does that mean that none of them are going to be wheelchair ready?
I don't know if it's going to be Ian or Adam who answers that.
I could commence with an answer. Yeah, Ian, please, please come in if you wish. But no, the scheme will have a number of units from day one that will be fully accessible. So no, there will be a provision from inception of the scheme for accessible apartments. But we have designed the building in such a way that a number of other apartments and a range of apartments of both one, two and three bedroom formats are designed in such a way that they could be later adapted, as well as those that we provide on day one.
That's fantastic. Developers take notes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have councillor Huares, or by councillor Conception. Merna, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, morning.
Morning.
So it's two hundred and twenty eight apartments. A hundred and two of them are going to be one bedroom, forty six studios, and twenty eight that will be two bedroom. There's only twenty two car parking spaces. First of all, I just want to ask, so there's a high number of just one bedroom apartments. To me, it just doesn't seem to be a choice for people with children, who might have children who are, you know, say for example, a boy and a girl. Are you, are these apartments going to be marketed at people that work in the city centre? Because, you know, with only having twenty two car parking spaces, to me would suggest that, you know, you're looking for people who are local, who work in the city centre, and should they lose their job and maybe get a job in Manchester or another city, would have to sell up and leave. Can I ask you what kind of, who are you going to be marketing your apartments to?
Can I just, before we answer the specific question, can I just clarify the mix on units? Because the numbers you referred to then were, I'm afraid, not correct. Did you catch that?
No. The sound completely broke up there, Adam. Adam, would you like to repeat the very last bit you said? About numbers. You said that the numbers quoted weren't correct.
Adam, you're on mute, unfortunately.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes. So just to confirm on numbers, there are a hundred and two two bedroom apartments and twenty eight three bedroom apartments. I think those were the numbers that perhaps were misrepresented just a minute ago. So combining those, they represent over fifty per cent of the total mix in terms of more family sized accommodation. So hopefully that alters your question slightly. But in terms of car parking, city centre policy is very much to try and encourage sustainable means of transportation. And we believe this site is perfect to fulfil that desire, being in very close proximity to James Street Station and also the main bus route into town along the strand. So highways officers have actively encouraged us to provide a car parking ratio that is quite reduced in order to hopefully try and encourage those people that choose this location as a base to use more sustainable forms of transport. And that's why there is such a high proportion of cycle spaces, that there are some motorcycle spaces as well. And it's also worth just reiterating, the site is within two minutes walking distance to a multi storey car park that is also owned by the developer of this building, Peel. So it does, to me, feel like it's a true location for a fully mixed use, sustainable development. And that's the reason why the car parking strategy is what it is and has been endorsed by Andy Dingle, Your Highways Officer.
And you did point out about the multi storey car park. Would you like to come in as well, Ian?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to pick up on the previous development, which has got a consent. We actually have built upon that development scheme, and we offer actually more three bedroom apartments in this scheme than the previous consented scheme.
Thank you, Ian. And can we pass on now to councillor Conception's question?
Thanks, Chair. Can I ask Ian or Adam, as with the previous application in relation to the waste collection system, would you be happy with an additional condition that requires a waste management plan? Because it really doesn't go into any details in relation to how we recycle waste in this development. So I think it would be appropriate, really, we do have an additional condition.
Just to say, the design stage we're at, the building has been designed in accordance with British Standard five nine zero six two thousand and five, and that requires two collections per week based on the seventeen times eleven hundred litre Euro bin collection. So we feel we've met current British Standard requirements. Peel is an incredibly responsible developer and puts a high emphasis on waste and recycling across their whole portfolio of buildings in Liverpool Waters. We think we're already beyond what is reasonable standards, but, you know, I'd like to know what you feel we can do more, really.
It's really about promoting recycling. It doesn't really say in the report. I know there's a condition nineteen, which gives details of where, you know, the bin stores, et cetera. But we're trying to promote recycling across the city. And the waste is a problem for Liverpool in terms of the cost to the city council. And the more that we can recycle, the better and more improvements we can get in making sure that we don't contaminate our planet. All I'm trying to say is that I think we agree. Why don't we have a condition that comes up with a waste management plan that informs tenants and residents what to do with the waste?
Can I also add, I completely agree with what you're saying in terms of the recycling aspect, and so do with the applicants and the developers, Your Housing Peel. As Adam has stated, the privately, the private land of Peel already has developments which undergo this recycling collection. And due to the PRS nature, the private rental sector nature of this development, there will be a management company on site twenty four seven, which would look to encourage, where possible, this aspect to residents. So I feel that the conditions already stated within the application and the decision notice, as well as the work we've undertaken, as mentioned in my opening statements, which provided additional information for this application, is sufficient.
Okay, well, I'll listen to what the officer has to say. Thanks, Chair.
I'm sure the officer will cover this point when we get on to that. But now there don't seem to be any more questions for the architects. So I'm going to invite councillor Maria Tulan to address the committee in objection to the application. Maria, would you like to come in now?
Chair, with a peer councillor Toulon's been unable to join us, so I could suggest colleague councillor Small addresses committee, and he's on her behalf as well.
So councillor Small, if you'd like to address the committee now, maybe include anything you know that councillor Toulon wanted to ask about.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Can people hear me okay?
I can.
Yeah, fantastic. Well, thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I think the three councillors, myself, Christine Banks and Maria Tulan, have all put in the same objection to this. And it's not an objection to the whole of the scheme, it's to one particular aspect of it. In principle, we support the scheme. It's a good scheme. We support the principle of residential development on this site. I supported and spoke at the planning committee about eight years ago in support of the Liverpool Waters outline and planning permission, which did identify this site for residential development. I also spoke a couple of years ago in support of the Plaza eighteen twenty one and the Hive and developments adjacent to this. And I think in this part of the city does need to be developed. It does lend itself to residential development. And this is a good scheme in principle, with one exception and one issue that I wanted to raise on behalf of residents, which is that many residents believe that this on behalf of residents, which is that many residents believe that this iteration of the, of the plans for this and site is, is too close and to, to existing, to existing apartments on, in the City Loft and number one and William Jessop Way. And the development, this is a development that has, that has been around for about ten or twelve and probably, probably about twelve to fifteen years now. And it's an established development. There's lots of residents there. There is a, there is a community there. Most of the residents there recognise that this site is going to be developed. And most of the residents there want to see more residential development and more mixed use development on Prince's Dock. And there's a lot to be, and there's a lot to support about this, particularly around the commercial developments on, on the ground floor, which will add to the amenity for existing residents. But what existing residents are saying, particularly those who live on the ten story block in, in, in City Loft, what they are saying is that this is too close and this iteration of the development is too close to their to their development. It's too high and, and, and it will, it will sort of, it will have overhang on, on, on their development. It will be, be too close in terms of privacy. It will impact on, on their existing views. What they've asked me to raise is, is, is whether, and it may be too late to do that at this stage in the, in the planning application, but they've asked me to do it, which is, is, is whether this development can be, can be flipped. So the smaller tower is, is, is the one that's close, that's next to the City Loft development. And the taller one is on the other side to this. There have been at least two different iterations of, of this scheme. There's been planning applications that have, that have gone forward. There was the Shanghai Tower Scheme. All of them had the taller tower further away from, from, from City Loft. It didn't cause a problem in terms of privacy, i- i- in terms of the views for the residents in City Loft. And that's the issue that they've asked me to raise. The second point that I want to raise, Chair, and I haven't brought this up in the, in, in, in the representation I made, but it's to respond to councillor Conception around recycling. I would strongly urge the committee to put a condition in around recycling. What we find with new developments across the city centre and the waterfront is, is everyone's really well intentioned at the start. Everyone's saying, we want to encourage recycling. And I've got absolutely no doubt that the developer, you know, wants to do that and wants to encourage recycling. The, the, the problem always happens when the development's done and you've got a caretaker in place or a concierge in place who can't be bothered to do the recycling because you've got people are mixing and general wasting recycling. Oh, it's too much bother. They don't really want it. They can't do it. And, and that's the problem right across the city centre and the waterfront when you don't actually condition recycling in from the start. So I'd say to the committee and I'd urge the committee to put some sort of condition in place to future proof this, to make sure that the, the, the best intentions of the developer are actually reflected in, in terms of what goes on. There'll be a management company in there running this. You're going to have a caretaker in place and doing it. And I think we need to put in a condition so that those intentions actually happen and actually turn out to, and to, to, to be what's there, once this and development's up and, up and running.
Thank you. Well, I'm sure we're going to cover the second point when we get on to our case officer report. But would Adam or Ian like to make any further points here? Adam?
Yes, I would. Thank you for, for inviting me to respond. And thank you councillor Small for your, for your question. It, 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 it was part of the design process. We, we really did think long and hard about the, the point that you're raising. So it's not surprising for me to hear you ask this question. And we did look at alternative approaches. I don't know whether it's possible at this stage now for the slides to be put back on the screen because I can probably answer, or at least try and answer your point with reference to the drawings. Is that, is that possible?
Can we get the drawings back up, please? Well, we've got them back up, Adam. I don't know.
Yeah, there's a particular slide which I think might be the next. That's, that's it. Yeah. So if, if I could just focus everybody's attention on the right hand image on, on that slide. So if I understand councillor Small's question, what, what he's asking is whether the yellow shape, which is, which is our proposal, could be flipped. So the, the taller element is on the right rather than the left. Now, as I say, we, we did look at that and we, we, we debated the pros and cons of both solutions. And the conclusion we came to, and it wasn't a conclusion that was solely our own, it was a conclusion that we worked very closely with head of planning, conservation officers and Historic England. And the view was that the way that this building sits within the cluster of structures that rises to really the, the highest building in the local context, which is the Beetham, the Tower, which is the, the building to the far right. The, the arrangement of buildings sat much more comfortably with the lower podium section of our proposal on the right hand side. And that's exactly how William Jessop Way is conceived as well. So if you can see William Jessop House on the left, the City Loft building, that also has its lower section on the right and its higher section on the left. And then that allows a, a, a wide, what we call interface distance between the highest elements of its structure. So you can see hopefully on this slide that the interface distance between City Lofts and our proposal is fifty two point five metres at the higher levels. And to give you an idea, members are probably, probably aware, usual city centre interface distances range from about fifteen metres up to about twenty two metres interface. So we are actually three times more than what is the usual standard interface distance for city centre development. If we were to flip the building as proposed by councillor Small, then the taller elements of the building would then flip to the right. And hopefully you can see that that would put immense pressure on the interface distance to Plaza eighteen twenty one, which is potentially already eight point five at its lowest level, twenty eight point five as we're currently proposing, the dimension in the middle of the screen there. So you, you would therefore exasperate the problem to another building on the right. So we, we've taken a balance and we think we've got the balance right in terms of trying to give all the buildings in this location a fair amount of breathing space between each of their facades. And, and as I say, it's not a decision that I made on my own. It was, it was a collaborative decision with, with, with head of planning, with Historic England. And, and we feel we've got the right solution as we're proposing to you today.
Ian wants to come in. Ian, would you like to come in as well now, please?
Yes, thank you. And just to add on to that very quickly, obviously we undertook a detailed daylight and sunlight report which concluded that the changes were negligible when compared to the design of the previous consent. So we've also assessed the previous consent, not just seen it as a standalone basis. As Adam has said as well, this is a city centred development. And under those guidelines set within daylight, sunlight and overshadowing, the BR two oh nine guidelines, our development does fall within those guidelines and it should be deemed acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very well for discussing this because although it was mentioned in Adam's original presentation, I had considered another way around, the flip way around. It had been rejected and our case officer is at liberty to comment further on this later. And I'm going to pass over to our case officer now because I don't see any other questions being indicated. So can I hand over to you now, Felicity?
Thank you, Chair. I'm Felicity Collins. I've been the case officer for this planning application, working with our consultees and, and looking at these various issues. I think there's been quite a lot of discussion and, and thank you to councillors and to the architect and agent for picking up on, on those points. I think probably just to recap really, in terms of the report you've got in front of you, we, we're recommending approval of this scheme, which is entirely PRS residential development. So it's a, it's a redesign of a scheme that we, a, a very similar quantum and scale of, of development that we approved in twenty eighteen. As Ian covered in his presentation, this is, this is a standalone application, but it, it is actually forming part of the Liverpool Waters redevelopment of Prince's Dock. And there were four development plots along William Jessop Way, two of which have now been built out for Plaza eighteen twenty one and Lexington. And, and this is the, this is the third plot within, within that area. So there is, there is a precedent set by those, those previous consents. And we have, we have assessed the scheme on its own merits. In terms of the, if I just pick up on the, the points that have been discussed, I think rather than going through the whole application, I think we've, we've, we did look very early in the pre-application stages with the architect at an alternative flip and design. I think Adam's covered that in quite a lot of detail. And it's picked up in the report that officers are, are supportive of, of the scheme in its current form. In terms of the, the design of the building, it's, we, we're comfortable that it's a sufficiently high quality alternative to the scheme which we approved previously. And that grouping of buildings, as was illustrated in the, in the slide with them, with the full length of William Jessop Way, I think we, we are comfortable that it'll be a very positive contribution to that grouping of buildings and, and the city skyline more, more widely. And I think it's fair that the, the concerns raised by the objectors are, are very understandable. But the technical reports and information that's been provided with the application does indicate very clearly that there would be very little difference between this scheme and the proposed scheme. And the interface distances, as, as Adam's just covered in his present, presentation, are do need to respect the fact that there are residential buildings on either side of this, not just to the north of the building. All of these buildings, I think I would add, do benefit from having very open aspects to the east and west. And I think we need to bear that in mind when we're looking at the scheme because of their position next to the dock and next to the the strand looking towards the city centre. So they do all benefit from fairly oblique, open views to, to the east and west. So just moving on then from, from that to the parking question that was raised by councillor Huares. It is a very low level of parking. I'm thinking our, our highways colleagues picked up that, that's an acceptable level for this city centre location. But that the, there are some restrictions at the moment in terms of accessing the city centre, in terms of crossing the strand and in terms of public transport provision. And so in line with the other four, sorry, the other three development plots along William Jessop Way, our highways colleagues have asked for a, a contribution of a hundred thousand pounds towards a connectivity and public realm fund, which would be spent within the Prince's Dock area to, to improve that connectivity. So that is, forms part of the revised recommendation. In terms of the comments that have been raised on waste, I think we are comfortable as officers that there's sufficient space within the building to store, to store waste. And the, the, the position of that within the floor plan is, is well located to be accessed from the car park. So I think we're very comfortable that the, the building has made the necessary arrangements for that. If the chair were minded to, 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 to take that on board, I think the only thing that we, I would suggest is if we were to include within condition nineteen for the applicant to provide details of how recycling will be, will be split, the split of, of recycling and refuse bins within that. So just as an amendment to condition nineteen, which is already asking for a servicing and access strategy. And that could, that would be a way to secure some additional detail around how recycling will be managed. I think we, you know, in this situation, we have your housing development will be managing the whole building. It's an entirely PRS scheme and it will be maintained and managed by your housing. So we do have a single facility manager that, that would be operating these apartments. So it maybe differs to some city centre schemes where apartments would be sold or, or let individually. So that would be, if, if you were minded to, to make that amendment to condition nineteen, nineteen, we could do that. Okay. So I, I don't think there's anything further for me to say on this other than that the there are two conditions. There is a, sorry, there is an updated recommendation in front of you on the table's update. The applicant has gone through a viability appraisal in relation to the standard section one oh six contributions. Our independent assessors have reviewed that viability appraisal since, and, and come to a conclusion since the publication of the report. And it's accepted that in this case, the contributions towards open space, street trees and public art would render the scheme unviable and in this instance should be waived. And I think that's considered justifiable here in, in order to secure delivery of this project. And particularly because alternative provisions exist within the terms of the wider Liverpool Waters outline permission to ensure the site's amenity requirements are satisfied. So the, the recommendation for approval is now on the basis of the highways contribution plus monitoring and, and legal costs. The other updates in front of you in relation to responses we've received from statutory consultees. Firstly, the Environment Agency. The Environment Agency have confirmed that the, there were the area of the sites that were thought to be in flood zone three are actually within flood zone two. And so we can amend the drainage condition accordingly. And in respect of protection for birds through the construction environmental management plan, Natural England have confirmed that the information provided by the applicant is acceptable. And so we can amend condition for requiring an update for that construction environmental management plan. So those are the, the conditions updates. We've also received since the, since the update was published, a set of plans that just include the correct arrangement for two accessible parking bays. So those, those plans, references will be updated in any decision taken forward.
Thank you, Felicity. That was very thorough. And I would say that in view of the fact that local councillors have expressed such concern about recycling, I would welcome your suggestion to change condition nineteen so that we have a clause in it that mentions about the separation of waste. And I will be including that when I make my recommendation. Are there any questions? Well, I don't see anybody indicating, so I take it then, that Felicity and our developers and architects have really covered all the points. I do think we've had a very thorough debate on this. So I would like to move that the recommendation as amended and with a change in the clause in condition nineteen to include separation of waste. Oh, hang on, be approved. Myrna? Councillor Huares?
Yes, Chair. I'd like to, I would like to move an amendment on this application today.
Go ahead.
Yes, Chair. I would like to move an amendment that the application not be approved today as the, the, the application is in the World Heritage Buffalso. This could lead to an impact on World Heritage status. Also, I would like to move an amendment as well that the design and scale of eleven stories on the that the design and scale of 11 stories on this site is overdevelopment will have an impact on other residents' amenities. And I would like to recommend that, well, I would like the amendment to say that we shouldn't approve the application today as it's overdevelopment of the site.
So I'll hand over to you, Michael, to look into the amendment now. So if we've got anybody to support it.
Thank you, Chair. For potential clarity, councillor Juarez, I believe, was seeking to move an amendment that the application be refused on the basis that the scale and massing and design of the proposed developments being adjacent to and within the World Heritage Site would have a negative impact on setting of the wider World Heritage Site area and affect its continued status thereof. And in addition, the scale, massing and design of the proposed development were considered to be both inappropriate and result in a harmful and negative impact on the immunity of residential occupants in existing adjacent buildings. That, I believe, summarizes it. Do any members wish to actually second the amendments? We have no indications of a second, therefore councillor Juarez, unfortunately, your amendment falls and we therefore revert to the motion from the Chair. So Chair, your vote on your original motion as amended, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception. Thank you.
So, Michael, was that me? Can I hear you? Is that me?
Yes, it was, Jim.
Yes, fully agree. Wonderful scheme.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor McLinden.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat. Councillor Marat. Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Juarez.
Against.
Thank you. I'll record your dissent on the name, Myrna, as well. Just to confirm, the outcome is seven members voting in favour, one member against, which is councillor Juarez. The application as amended and subject to the revisions to conditions is carried as stated. And we'll therefore move on to item number six, which relates to the Alderhey Children's Foundation on Eaton Road, Liverpool 12, which is in Notte Ash Ward. Chair?
Thank you. So we're moving on to the Children's Hospital, which we've had before us again. And councillor Conception has expressed an interest in this. They won't be able to vote. And we are having a presentation on this now. So I don't know who's going to speak on this, but would you like to go ahead?
Hi, good morning, Chair and members of the planning committee. My name's Kieran O'Toole and I represent Alderhey Children's NHS Foundation Trust in support of the application, the new community cluster, which consists of a clinical hub and the Dari Jones Pediatric Mental Health Facility and the Alderhey Estate, which is funded on Eaton Road, which is in the West Derby area of the city. I will be handing the presentation to the project architect, Mr Steve Wilson. And I will be here to address any questions that the members of the committee may have. I'll hand over to you now, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you, Kieran, and over to Steve then.
Thank you, everybody. Good morning. So thanks for seeing the scheme again this morning. The key reasons really that the scheme, as you said councillor before, was before committee late 2019 and approved subject to signing of the 106 agreement, which I believe was all done apart from the actual ceiling, at which point the scheme was deemed unaffordable. Also, with a number of operational issues and the onset of COVID and other things, certain things started to change in terms of the operational side of it and the affordability. So we were back in touch with officers to discuss how we might review that, rather than sort of taking it through the process of signing the 106 and then going to a section 73 material amendment. Through working with officers, the changes, if I just sort of highlight them, which we ought to talk to you about today, are sort of key changes around that there's an element of a police function for the facility to ultimately replace the Eaton Road Police Station. That has now all been relocated. It was previously within two parts of the building. That's now relocated all to the Eaton Road elevation. The, sorry, I lost my train of thought then. The two buildings, or the two buildings, as was previously presented, had a very, very small two-metre-wide gap between them. To create one central focused entrance for the mental health facility, we've brought those two buildings together. It also does have a beneficial financial gain there in terms of making the scheme affordable. But to be clear, you know, the applicant was under great pains to maintain, as Alderhey have looked to do historically, maintain the quality of the product and the quality of the aesthetic. So working with case officers and working with your urban design colleagues, we've looked to maintain that design quality while also not losing that in a cost-cutting exercise. So materials-wise, the building hasn't changed at all. We are still looking at the corten steel, the timber frame to the impatient part of the building. And we've just tried to rationalise things a little bit. We've relocated windows to make the interior natural daylighting much more of a benefit for the children who'll be occupying the space. And then we've worked with urban design to try and improve the Eaton Road elevation slightly. And so if I could have the next slide, please. You're probably all very, very familiar with this site, with the number of applications that have gone over the last few years. But just for orientation purposes, the bottom right of the image there is the main hospital and multi-storey car park. North of that is the institute in the Park Education Centre. To the left in the blue area is the site that's currently under demolition to deliver the new park, or the relocated park. And the bit in green is the bereavement centre. The larger area in white is this current application. And obviously, yeah, we want to retain all of those proposed linkages and accesses through. Could have the next slide, please. So in terms of the building itself, the visual there on the left, you can see that, you know, material-wise, this hasn't changed at all from the original scheme, other than we have brought the buildings slightly together. The main changes on these elevations are on the ground floor, which is actually the middle floor of that visual, which has, you know, a number of, there's a lot of smaller, punchier windows previously. These have now been brought together, which makes the natural daylight within the rooms better and also has a financial benefit of, you know, less window openings to create in the construction. But in essence, the sort of what is called basement level, but to be clear, it's not a basement. It's basement relative to the main hospital side. Is undercroft parking and to the front here is the police suite. The left hand of the bigger of the main block is the outpatient facility. The right hand is the inpatient, with now one single main entrance, which can be accessed from the car park or across a podium bridge from the main hospital site. Down the right-hand side, we've shown you some images there to really show that the design quality inside has been maintained as per the original concept by my colleagues at Cullen Studio, who were the concept architects of the original scheme. If I could move to the next slide, please. So this just shows, orientation purposes, the ground level for this building, but basement in inverted commas for the main site. So the two areas in blue are the built element, the rest of it is car park in the landscape. The smaller square in the middle is the entrance from the car park up into the main central entrance. The right-hand side is now predominantly the police facility. There is a small access to the inpatient garden area, but also a small laundry facility for the inpatient ward. In terms of car parking, we've got, as the previous application, six spaces, four of which are electric charging vehicle positions, two of which have been designated for the police facility. And the, I can't quite recall the number of disabled parking bays, but that hasn't changed from the previous application. There is, the bottom left of that image, you can see a ramp coming up that goes back into the wider landscape of the wider hospital and the park. To the north is the new bereavement centre, which is due to be finished construction in the next couple of months. And to the right is Eaton Road. Next slide, please. So if I do with the top left first, the top left is the new Eaton Road elevation. Now, working with urban design, we've brought a bit of fun and a bit of life to the front elevationist building through the use of integrating a coloured cladding that will link in with more of the main hospital buildings and follow the rhythmic balance of the institute next door. But that receives back into the natural materials of the corten generally around this building, which then feeds into the park. So there's a, you know, we're using this as a sort of a transitional elevation, but clearly signifies that there is a building here in its own right. Materiality-wise, as I've already mentioned, the corten steel is still in place. We've got fully glazed internal courtyards, both inpatients and outpatient, so that regardless of where the kids are being sort of treated, they can go out and have some external space while they're in that process. The CLT timber frame is still as it was previously. And the key is that all of the windows from the bedrooms in particular, but as many of the rooms as we could, have been oriented so that the views are out to the park, which again has been a consistent theme of the whole hospital in the park concept. The right-hand side here is just the ground floor and the first floor plans. So the ground floor is effectively a wide bridge link across into the main entrance. Then you would turn left into the outpatient department or right into the inpatient department. So one very, very simple, common route into the building, very, very easily navigable. The first floor, sorry, so the left-hand side, we've got effectively four wings either side of a courtyard over two floors. Each one of those is an element of the outpatient department with a central waiting engagement space, we called it, trying to destigmatise waiting. So the right-hand side, you enter at ground floor level into a sort of a secure area beyond which is the, you know, the even more secure inpatient facility for those children who are in need of tier four Cameron's treatment. The first floor there is essentially bedrooms, lounges and sort of living accommodation for those up to 12 patients that sort of stay overnight. Others do attend that facility during the day, but will only use the school and the therapy spaces and then will return home in the evenings. Next slide, please. Oh, that's it. So just to recap on that really, you know, the key we're asking you to consider here today are those changes that will make the scheme both viable operationally and financially. Those key things are, the two buildings have been brought together to create one comprehensive access, but without breaking the scale and it still works as a pavilion within the wider park and development. We've improved the Eaton Road aesthetic. Police have been co-located. We've rationalised an element of the windows predominantly to the ground floor to give better daylight and again to give us a financial gain in making the scheme affordable. But again, you know, I've said it a number of times, but with great pains to make sure that the design quality that you guys, the committee previously, and the trust, the applicant themselves are really keen on pushing those boundaries, that has not been compromised and we are looking to maintain that moving forwards. And the scheme has, subject to this approval, has the funding in place and is literally contract signed with the contractor, ready to go. Thank you.
Once this is all decided today, we'd like to hear that Steve can go ahead once they have consented. So are there any questions now for Kieran or Steve? I don't see anybody indicating, but Myrna, you still have your hand up. And I think it's from the last of them.
Yes, sorry.
Do you have a question, Myrna, or did you have your hand up from before?
No, Chair, I don't have a question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Myrna. So our final speaker was a local resident who's going to address us. And I think he's also speaking for a resident who's more involved with the ball. So can I ask you to go ahead, please, Dave Ape?
Thanks, lady. Yeah, just thank you for allowing me to address the committee today. And I just want to introduce myself as David Ape and I'm a local resident. And also to confirm that Mr Graham Winrow, who is going to present the committee today, has had a personal emergency and sends his apologies. And so I'll be making some comments on his behalf as well as myself. The first thing to say is that obviously the buildings look fantastic and the use for the buildings is fantastic. So certainly there's no issues from a community point of view. We think this is a fantastic development, but there are some sort of key issues in terms of the logistics of this development. And originally, obviously, the 106 agreement was part of land swap that allowed Alderhey to build a brand-new hospital and then reinstate the park. The hospital was opened five years ago. And obviously, we had now been given a date of 2023 for completion of the reinstatement. So that's eight years in terms of from the hospital opening to the park being reinstated. So it's, there's been, in that time, there's been multiple plan applications gone in. And this is another one now. It's another variation to the plan application that's going in. So our concern is that as an overall site, it was originally billed as one big site, build the hospital, return the park. And then since then, it's been broken up into multiple elements and multiple plan applications that are constantly getting changed, varied, resubmitment of plan applications. So that's one consent. And so certainly from Graham's point of view and mine actually, that we think the whole site should be considered collectively rather than individual pockets of it, because it does have an impact into the local community and to the site as a whole, really. So that's one area with regard to the plan application. There's also in relation to traffic management and parking spaces, you note that there's going to be the additional parking spaces in there. But the transport assessment noted that there was a shortfall of around 80 parking spaces, which they plan to alleviate by moving some cars back into the multi-storey car park. Having done the survey for the multi-storey car park, it was mentioned that there was still a discrepancy of around about 40 spaces, which Alderhey have said they're going to move the IT department. So going back to what we talked about before with the delays with park reinstatement and things like that, there will be a concern though, would that happen? Would the IT department be moved or would this just go ahead? And then we wouldn't see those spaces that are made available. Just from my own personal experience, I walk dog past the, pretty much every day, once or twice a day. And I've noticed the multi-storey car park pre-COVID was full most days. And so I don't know how the survey pans out with that, but I noticed that it was full most days. And so I don't know how we plan to put 40 more cars into there. I'm not quite sure. Also with regard to the parking elements, on the reinstatement, plan application for the park, it shows that there's been a recent change to it also. And it shows that Alderhey are occupying two temporary sites on the parkland, which is going to be parkland. One holds 43 spaces and one holds 270. So that's 300 spaces currently being occupied by Alderhey on land, which is going to become parkland by phase two, which we assume is around 2021, potentially 2022. So once the park is reinstated and those temporary car parks are gone, where do those 313 cars go? Have they been considered as part of this plan? And where do they go? Where there's mention with regard to the residence parking scheme in the area, which is going to help alleviate any problems from the site going into the local area. First of all, that parking scheme has been talked about for quite a lot of years now. I think we're well beyond five years that parking residence scheme was talked about. It's still not been implemented. So I understand it's been approved, but it's still not been implemented. So again, we have some concerns that that's not in place. The other thing is that in requiring the residence parking scheme, it shows that, and again, from my own personal experience being a local resident, it shows that hospital staff and hospital visitors are parking in the neighbouring streets. So once the scheme is implemented. So once the scheme is implemented, those people who are parking in the nearby streets, where are they gonna park as well? So that adds more discrepancies to the level of parking that's available, um, on site in, in, in my opinion. Um, just one other thing regarding to parking was that, um, when the car park was full, um, the multi-story car park was full, um, there's an access road that runs along the backside of the, of the, um, the entrance to the, um, the multi-story car park that runs right across to the blue light, uh, route next to the institute building. Um, it doesn't have a permanent barrier on that access road. And so with it just being a temporary barrier, you often find that people just remove it because it becomes a wraparound. It's easier for them to turn left out of the car park and head towards Eaton Road than it is to turn right and head to East Prescott Road. So often that barrier is being removed. And actually, when the car park was full, onsite security or stewards were policing cars to go down the access road to get the blue light route, to then go up, in, up by the institute and gain access to the temporary car parks at the back of, uh, back of the building, which is on the, on the parkland at the moment. So that, that road in particular also causes some, some other concern. Um, what, um, so as, whether they put a permanent barrier on there or whether they leave as the temporary barriers, which can just be easily removed by people wanting to get past, I, I don't know.
Can I ask you to draw your remarks to a conclusion now, please?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So, um, yeah, so just, just, just overall, we, I think we asked that, um, the overall, the overall site is considered, uh, as a whole or at least taken into consideration these extra developments. Uh, the northeast plot, uh, which wasn't shown in the drawings we've just seen actually, because that was, that was all lit up in blue on that, on that drawing. But the northeast plot has actually been sold to a developer, Step Places, who plan to build 170 dwellings, I think it is on that site. Some of them more than one bedroom, again, and there's issues over parking and traffic related to those. But I noticed it wasn't on that drawing that you presented before earlier. You, you just listed that as being parkland, which it isn't. We, we know it's being sold to Step Places, so that should be in consideration at this stage as well. Um, and obviously there's the issue with, uh, parking, traffic management. Um, and yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have another speaker on this page, so I'd like to ask my face officer to comment. Um, but also, um, I'd like to ask Andy Dingwall to come in with some comments on the proposed residence parking scheme, whether it is likely to go ahead, because that was another, um, point raised by the local resident on behalf of himself and Graham, who could be with us today. So over to you, please, John.
Thank you, Chair. Um, again, you've had a very detailed presentation there that's, that's gone into some, um, some detail about the proposals. Um, I don't wanna say too much. I'll try and, um, just pick up on the points, uh, that have been raised by the, uh, the last speaker, the objector to the scheme. Um, just very quickly, in terms of the background, you've heard that there was an application that was dealt with by this committee back in November 2019 uh, for an almost identical proposal. Um, the section 106 wasn't agreed, wasn't signed, and therefore it remained a live application. And so the applicants have come and amended that application, uh, and that's what's before you, um, today. Um, so a lot of the issues have already been addressed by this planning committee. You've had the, um, changes explained to you through that presentation and that's set out in the report. So I don't wanna say anything further on those unless there are specific questions. I think there's two main points that have been raised by, uh, the last speaker. Uh, the first is around the wider developments associated with Alder Hay. Um, reference to the section 106 and the replacement parkland and so on. Uh, there was mention of, um, part of the site being disposed of for, for residential and so on. Um, as this committee will be aware, the requirement is for you to consider each application on its own particular merits. Whilst they acknowledge and understand the wider issues that are being raised there, they are not necessarily pertinent to the consideration of this particular application. Where they are pertinent, um, is perhaps in relation to the wider highway matters. And obviously the report goes into some detail about the parking situation and looking ahead at what might come forward and, 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 and changes that are afoot within the overall hospital estate. And some of the things that have been mentioned, uh, by that last speaker are fully addressed within the highway section of your report. Essentially, your officers are satisfied that they recognise, um, that there are some challenges in relation to, uh, the parking situation, but are on balance are satisfied with the overall, um, intentions of the trust and the particular, um, um, highway requirements arising as a result of this specific development. Um, so I don't really want to add anything what's in the agenda papers around the parking and highway matters. Um, I will however pass over to Andy Dingwall to pick up on some of those issues if he wants to elucidate further, but also pick up on that point you raised, Chair, about the residence parking scheme. So I'll hand over now to, uh, Andy Dingwall. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Um, really just to reiterate what John said, and, and obviously the, the, the person that made the representations earlier, that the report is pretty detailed insofar as highways is concerned. You know, we recognise that there's a huge demand for car parking at Alder Hay. Uh, we understand that the car park, the multi-story car park i- is often full at times. And we've sought to achieve a, an appropriate level of car parking associated with these particular, this particular application, which, which we feel we've achieved. Um, I suppose what we don't wanna do is to encourage a, a, a continuous increase and, and, and abundance of car parking availability, because what that seeks to do then is effectively encourage more people to travel by car, um, increase traffic in the area, which then leads to issues on the highway network. So we're very conscious of the impact of what the, the traffic generated by an abundance of car parking would do. So we're comfortable with the idea of capping the car park. I mean, there's 1,200 spaces in the multi-story. There, there's a, you know, um, 60 odd spaces being provided here, and we think that that's appropriate. What we are seeking to do though is obviously introduce the residence parking scheme, which, which has been fully funded and, and consulted on and is ready to be implemented. The traffic regulation orders have all been, uh, made now to cover that. Um, and we're also working with the hospital trust to update their travel plan as well. And the, and the travel plan really is, is key to this. What we wanna do is work with the hospital trust to encourage as many people as possible, primarily staff, to use more sustainable modes of transport rather than by default just jumping in the car and expecting to be able to park at the hospital site. So I think with the residence parking scheme, those controls that will be implemented in due course and the updated travel plan, we will end up at the situation where parking demand is, is better managed for the whole of the hospital site going forwards.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, John. Are there any questions? Um, I need to inform you, Dave, that you're not allowed to ask questions. We only accept questions, um, from members of the planning committee now. You were allowed to say what you had to say during your presentation. And I noticed that you have been informed that the residence parking scheme is going to go ahead and the traffic regulation orders have already been processed. So are there any other questions? Counselor Juarez. Go ahead, Counselor Juarez.
Yes, um, I would like, um, the officer to update, um, where, where are the, the, um, the status at the moment with the relocation of the, the promise that was given about, you know, giving the, the park back to the local community. Um, the, the speaker this morning mentioned that, and I see by some of the objections that, you know, there is still concerns regarding uh, those commitments that were made. Um, I was in part, I wasn't a councillor at that time. I wasn't part of this committee. So can I, can you please update us on that?
I, I, I'm not sure I can, to be honest, Chair. Um, I, I, I would re- restate what I said earlier. Is it's not pertinent to the consideration of this particular application. I understand it's a wider issue that many of the residents in and around that area have concerns about. Um, but it's not germane to the consideration of this particular application. My understanding however is that discussions continue, um, about the, um, um, the, the, the transfer of the park. That is obviously a matter outside of, of, uh, your officers remit within the planning authority. Um, i- it's a matter for colleagues within regeneration, but those discussions are continuing. You'll also see Chair from the history, uh, section of the report, um, that, um, consideration has already been given to, um, proposals for, uh, landscaping, um, back in, uh, 2019. So that application, uh, 19FO916. So, so there is, uh, there are proposals in place, um, to, to landscape that. And I think the only other point, Chair, that I would make in relation to the final comments made by the speaker about the last speaker, um, about the, um, development by a company called First Steps. There is no planning permission in place, uh, for the development of that site. Um, that there are some discussions taking place, but just, just to, again, make it clear, there is no, uh, planning permission for that particular part of the development. Hope that answers the question, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, John. Um, I cannot see any other questions. So can I move that the recommendation as amended be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Have any comments from members or any amendments to be moved now? In which case, your, please, Chair.
Agreed.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hanson?
Agreed, and I'll be leaving the meeting, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hanson.
Counselor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Counselor McLendon?
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. And lastly, Counselor Juarez?
Abstain.
An abstention, Counselor Juarez?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Conception, just to confirm, is not voting, having previously declared an interest. Therefore, the voting is six in favour and one abstention. The application is therefore carried on that basis and we'll move to our next items of business, which are items seven and eight on today's agenda, both which relate to allowing, uh, the Eastern Thornycroft Road, Liverpool 15. Chair?
We now have the agent for this development, um, who is going to deliver us a presentation and address the planning committee.
Hi, yes, good morning.
Yes, so morning. Vidal Jackson is next, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so good morning, and thank you for letting me present today. My name is Vidal Jackson from Smith Young Architects on behalf of the applicant, Luxury Student Homes. Luxury Student Homes are a management company throughout an exceptional reputation in providing carrying quality accommodation within the city and carrying out presidents, uh, carrying out developments to the highest degree. The proposal is for the conversion of the existing former derelict school into six residential units comprising of four Class C3 duplex flats and two HMO Class C3, C4 units, and includes the erection of two semi-detached Class C3 used dwellings. The site today is currently derelict and the former derelict school has only been used as storage facilities by the church for the past couple of years. The current state of the building is in desperate need of repair and refurbishments in order to save what can be salvaged of the original fabric. Can I have the next slide, please? We originally carried out a pre-application on the site in September 2019 and since have kept an ongoing close relationship and conversation with the planning officer in order for the design to be in keeping with the local architectural vernacular and respectful within the listed curtilage. The original planning submission was for five HMO Class C4 units within the former school and erection of two semi-detached HMO Class C4 units, which has now been amended through ongoing discussion with the planning officer to form the scheme presented today. From the outset, the conversion of the former school, which lies within the listed curtilage, was of importance to not cause any detrimental effects. We received initial comments from the planning officer in regard to our original submission, which highlighted the concerns over the total number of HMO units, in which we have now amended the overall HMO units from seven to two in line with the concerns from the local residents and planning officers. The two HMO units have also been coupled and located in, in the plan within the courtyard away from the residential unit and fronting Thornycroft Road. This is apartment five and six within the floor plan, as you can see on the screen. Next slide, please. The scheme proposes no alterations to the external elevations fronting Thornycroft and Baguette Street, but instead proposes refurbishment work to the defected parts of the elevations and windows where necessary, and a replacement roof to be in keeping with the existing. The proposed internal elevations fronting the private communal courtyard consist of alterations in order to create new openings for fenestration, access and roof lights, which has been designed to be in keeping and respectful to the existing architectural language. The preservation of the existing internal courtyard and the design for car parking has allowed for provision of amenity space for the occupants within the proposed units. Overall, the external fabric and appearance of the building will be largely unaltered and any alterations proposed have been to not be harmful to the building's architectural interest, but will instead bring a currently disused building back into long-term beneficial use whilst refurbishing and conserving its architectural importance. Can I have the next slide, please? The erection of the semi-detached dwellings fronting Thornycroft Road have been situated and designed in such way to be in keeping within the existing architectural language of the terraces along Thornycroft Road. The form of the dwellings follows suit from the existing dwellings, but it is reduced with a lowered ridge and ease level. This is allow, this is to allow that the dwellings to be lower than that of the existing school to be respectful. The proposed ought to be read as a continuation of the existing dwellings along Thornycroft Road and separate to that of the existing school. Overall, the sighting, form, mass and design of the proposed dwellings will not impact the setting of the existing listed building. Can I have the next slide, please? In conclusion, the overall scheme proposes to reinstate of the lapidated building, which is in current total disrepair. The overall proposed refurbishments and architectural interventions will allow for the preservation of the building's architectural fabric and provide unique and high-end quality living facilities within the local area. That's it. Thank you very much.
Now, well, I don't see any questions. So I now would like to hand over to our case officer to comment on this application.
Thank you again, Chair. Uh, again, a very helpful presentation. Um, it might be helpful if we just have that final slide, uh, on the screen. Um, Chair, i- if, um, i- in terms of the principle of development, um, clearly this is, um, considered acceptable. It's, um, um, a former school site. Um, it's obviously considered as part of the, uh, adjacent listed church, uh, curtilage listed. Um, and obviously it's important that we find a reuse for it. So residential, um, in your officer's view is entirely appropriate, given the, um, existing context. Um, so the, the issues are whether or not that development is appropriate, um, having regard to the listed building, um, whether, secondly, whether the, um, additional dwellings that are to be inserted into that courtyard fronting onto Thornycroft Road, again, are acceptable insofar as they, uh, reference the listed building and whether or not they harm it. Um, there's been a lot of discussion with your officers, um, heritage specialists, um, to develop the scheme and to get it to a point, uh, that we can recommend it to you. Um, as you've heard, um, from the presentation and within the report, uh, it was originally proposed to be an entirely HMO scheme. Your officers have pushed back on that to, that there are now actually only two of those properties within the overall scheme are to be HMOs, or the rest are, including those dwelling houses are to be, um, Class C3, so normal dwelling houses. And clearly permission, um, uh, would be needed if there were to be larger HMOs, uh, in the future. Um, in terms of, um, the, 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 the relationship of the flats to the listed building, again, your officers are satisfied um, that it has no harmful effect, uh, on the listed building. Um, the, the principle of residential, as I say, is acceptable. The principle of HMOs is acceptable. Um, in terms of the quality of accommodation internally, your officers have assessed this and are satisfied that, particularly in terms of the HMOs, the space standards conform to your to your standards. Highways and access issues, again, have been carefully looked at, and again, your officers are satisfied that there is adequate provision of car parking. So for all the reasons set out in the report, Chair, we are recommending approval both for planning permission and for the associated listed building consent, which is clearly the next item. But happy to answer any questions, Chair.
Are there any questions? Okay, well, as far as I'm concerned, I welcome the fact that there's been an adjustment over the HMOs in view of the fact that we get so many complaints about them here, that it isn't an Article IV area. So can I move that the recommendations as amended be approved? And this is for items seven and eight.
Thank you, Chair. Any indications of amendments? No? In which case your vote please, Chair.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Hanson? Apologies, councillor Hanson's left now. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor McLendon? Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. The present and the vote is unanimous, and can I remind members that when you're not speaking, please ensure your microphone's turned off, just so it doesn't disrupt or make the audio feed unclear. Thank you.
We now pass on to agenda items, again, to be considered together, nine and 10, which is unit 21 Hartley Village, Hartley Avenue, Aintree, Oral Park in Liverpool 9. And we've got a brief presentation on this one, but we have no speakers for the application or again, so I'm going to ask the case officer to comment on the presentation, analyze the issues. John?
Yeah, sorry, I was just having some tech problems there. Apologies. So you've obviously got a visual layer of the particular unit in question, and you'll see from the report that the proposal is to subdivide this unit, to provide two units, to provide some shop frontages and to insert some new windows. It's considered to be curtilage listed, given its association with the dining hall, and that your officers considered it to be on or around 1948, which is the trigger for considering whether or not something is curtilage listed. The applicants have submitted the listed building application in parallel with this application of planning permission. In terms of the principle of development, Chair, you'll see from the report that this is in an area that is mixed. It's part of a wider industrial area, but there is some residential properties that were sort of workers' houses built at the time of the original Hartley Jam factory. You've got some photographs there of the building, which will help to, for you to understand what's being proposed here. That site plan, again, is helpful just in terms of showing the relationship of the premises to the nearby residential properties. All of that development on the northwestern side of that main access road is industrial, and obviously you've got that sort of square of properties which is residential. So your officers are more than happy with this scheme, Chair. In terms of the heritage implications, your heritage specialist has advised that clearly there is some impact on the building. In the language of the MPBF, that is considered to be less than substantial harm, and where there is considered to be less than substantial harm, it then remains to be considered whether or not there are benefits to be accrued, and that your officer's judgment is that in this particular case there are wider benefits by bringing back into use this particular property. So there will be some alterations to those windows, the new shop frontages and the windows, but they're considered a process. There are benefits to be accrued, and that your officer's judgment is that in this particular case there are wider benefits by bringing back into use this particular property. So there will be some alterations to those windows, the new shop frontages. Apologies.
I'm sorry, I have a problem.
Yeah, sorry, something went wrong there, Chair.
Yeah, Chair, colleagues, just before bringing the chair in, can I remind everyone remaining present on the meeting to please not also have the live stream operational in the background? The live stream is approximately 15 to 20 seconds behind us, and it can conflict and override the audio, as you've heard John Hayes being somewhat repetitive on this occasion. So thank you for your patience, and I'll revert to the Chair.
Okay, are there any questions for John about this application? No? Well, in that case, can I move that the recommendation be approved? And this is for items nine and 10. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Juarez, were you about to indicate then?
Oh, no, sorry, mistake.
Thank you. Chair, your vote then, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
You? Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. And Councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. That's unanimous of those members present and voting, and the application is approved on that basis. We will now move on to our next item of business, which relates, which is item number 11, and relates to 52 Woodlands Road, Liverpool 17 in Mostly Hill Ward. Similar to our last item of business, Chair, we have no speakers either for or against, but I will display some images on screen to assist if you bear with me briefly while I bring those up.
And I think our case officer will be commenting on them.
Thank you, Chair. Stuart Clark, team leader of the South team. This is an application for a seven-bed HMO. It was originally submitted as an eight-person HMO, and your officers have negotiated it down to seven due to the need to achieve the acceptable internal spatial requirements to get satisfactory living accommodation, bedroom space, toilet and shower facilities. It's already being occupied as a HMO for six persons, and there's no record of recorded complaint lodged with environmental health, which suggests that the premises is being managed in an appropriate manner. As with all HMOs, particularly in terrace streets, there's no provision for street parking, but the case has been carefully assessed by the head of highways and transportation, who is satisfied that the provision of three-cycle spaces and its accessible location amounts to what is an appropriate facility in terms of highway impacts. If there is any demand for on-street parking, there is availability in the area that could accommodate it, but such uses tend to have low car ownership levels. You've got a detailed report in front of you, Chair, and members will be familiar with the issues. There's not a lot more I can add, but I'm happy to answer any questions, Chair.
Are there any questions? I don't see any being indicated, so I'm going to move on to the vote. Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any amendments at all from members? No? Thank you. In which case, your vote please, Chair.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. And Councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. That application is carried unanimously, and we'll move to our next item of business, number 12 on today's agenda, relating to number 51 Wellington Avenue, Liverpool 15 in Picton Ward. Similar to our previous item, we have no speakers either for or against, but to assist your consideration of the application, I'm just going to display images of this site on screen now, Chair. I would invite the case officer to comment on those. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Chair. Again, I don't have a great deal to say over and above what's in the report before you, Chair. This is a scheme that is very familiar to members. It's, again, an HMO facilitated by the usual dormer and single-storey extensions to provide a seven-bedroom house in multiple occupation. Your officers have assessed it against the standards that are currently in place, and we have concluded that it complies with those. And for all the reasons set out in the report, Chair, we are recommending approval. Happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions? I don't see anybody indicating, so again, I'm going to move straight on to the vote. Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any amendments from members? No? In which case, Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Councillor Conception, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Lastly, Councillor Juarez?
Against.
Thank you. Just to confirm the voting, just Councillor Juarez, did you say against, just for clarity?
Against, yeah.
Thank you. In which case, just to confirm the voting, it's five members for, one against. On that basis, the application is approved. Councillor Juarez, would you like your dissent recorded by name?
Yeah, please.
Thank you, that will be done. We'll now move on to item number 13, which relates to number 27 Langton Road, Liverpool 15 in Picton Ward. Slightly different from our last items of business insofar as the applicant is actually present online to answer any questions, if members have any. Otherwise, I will again display some images to assist, and I would invite the case officer to comment accordingly.
Thank you, Chair, again. Very similar to previous applications on this agenda, insofar as it's a house in multiple occupation for seven persons facilitated by the usual roof and single-storey extensions. Again, been assessed against your standards and considered to be in accordance with those. For all the reasons set out in the agenda papers, Chair, we are happy to recommend approval, and of course, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I can't see any hands going up. So I'm going to, again, move on to the vote. Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any comments from members or amendments? No? In which case, Chair, your vote.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. And Councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. That application is carried unanimously, and we'll move to our next item of business, number 12 on today's agenda, relating to number 51 Wellington Avenue, Liverpool 15 in Picton Ward. Similar to our previous item, we have no speakers either for or against, but to assist your consideration of the application, I'm just going to display images of this site on screen now, Chair. I would invite the case officer to comment on those. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Chair. Again, I don't have a great deal to say over and above what's in the report before you, Chair. This is a scheme that is very familiar to members. It's, again, an HMO facilitated by the usual dormer and single-storey extensions to provide a seven-bedroom house in multiple occupation. Your officers have assessed it against the standards that are currently in place, and we have concluded that it complies with those. And for all the reasons set out in the report, Chair, we are recommending approval. Happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions? I don't see anybody indicating, so again, I'm going to move straight on to the vote. Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any amendments from members? No? In which case, Chair, your vote please, Chair.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Just to confirm the voting, just Councillor Juarez, did you say against, just for clarity?
Against, yeah.
Thank you. In which case, just to confirm the voting, it's five members for, one against. On that basis, the application is approved. Councillor Juarez, would you like your dissent recorded by name?
Yeah, please.
Thank you, that will be done. We'll now move on to item number 13, which relates to number 27 Langton Road, Liverpool 15 in Picton Ward. Slightly different from our last items of business insofar as the applicant is actually present online to answer any questions, if members have any. Otherwise, I will again display some images to assist, and I would invite the case officer to comment accordingly.
Thank you, Chair, again. Very similar to previous applications on this agenda, insofar as it's a house in multiple occupation for seven persons facilitated by the usual roof and single-storey extensions. Again, been assessed against your standards and considered to be in accordance with those. For all the reasons set out in the agenda papers, Chair, we are happy to recommend approval, and of course, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I can't see any hands going up. So I'm going to, again, move on to the vote. Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any comments from members or amendments? No? In which case, Chair, your vote.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. And lastly, Councillor Juarez?
Sorry, agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. And lastly, Councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Are you on mute, Councillor Juarez?
Sorry, agreed.
for the erection of a telecommunications mast of twenty metre high within the central reservation of Longmore Lane. Hopefully we can get some images of the actual mast itself, just so you can understand the scale of it. So there it is on screen. So this is one of the larger masts, but again, your officers are satisfied that given its location within the central reservation, it reads as part of the overall highway furniture and the sighting and design is appropriate in this particular location, but those reasons we are recommending approval. Happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions? I don't see anybody indicating, but I can hear somebody speaking. Does anybody want to answer a question? Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, any comments or amendments from members? No? In which case your vote please Chair.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Marat. Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you, and councillor Juarez.
Agreed.
Thank you, that's carried unanimously, we'll therefore move to our next item of business, number sixteen relating to the corner of Bishopgate Street and Pilton Road in Waiver Street, Liverpool 15, again in Pilton Ward. We have no speakers either for or against, similar to our last items, I will therefore put some images on screen and ask the case officer to comment once those appear. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, again, an application for telecommunications equipment, so in this particular case it's a seventeen metre high mast. That's a very helpful visual, you'll see that the area is a mixed commercial profile, so there's a builders' yard there, a two-high warehouse and some shops. The surrounding area, I think, it's fair to say is residential, but you can clearly see that it's against the backdrop of that commercial development on the opposite side. So given the type of equipment being proposed, its height and the surrounding context, again, your officers are satisfied it reads very much as part of existing highway furniture and are happy to recommend approval. Happy to answer questions Chair.
And it was helpful having those images, they seem more realistic. Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, any comments or amendments from members? No? In which case Chair, your vote.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Marat.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you, and lastly councillor Juarez. Are you on mute councillor Juarez?
Sorry, agreed.
Thank you. That concludes the vote, the voting is unanimous on the application and is therefore approved. We will now move on to our last item of business today, number seventeen on the agenda, which relates to the Grass verge opposite Wincott Sports Ground, which is on Mather Avenue in Allerton, which is Liverpool 18, in Churchward. Similar to our previous few items, we have no speakers either for or against, so images are shortly going to be displayed on screen to assist, and once those are displayed, we'd invite the case officer to comment accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, this is another application for a telecoms mast. As you heard John Hayes before, the majority of these tend to be located in central reservations, that's going to be the case here, if members are minded to approve. These masts are primarily driven by the demand which is residential. In this particular case, we've managed to keep it as far away from residential properties as possible, given its location opposite Wincott Sportsfield, so the nearest residential property is a hundred and fifty metres away. Again, as you've heard previously, central reservations have street furniture in them and highway furniture. We believe that they're the most appropriate location for these structures, where we can accommodate them in the central reservation. Inevitably, they're going to have an impact due to their size, but as you'll see from the report, the benefits that this delivers through the provision of 5G services across the ward, we consider that outweighs any visual harm that may accrue, but given its location as remote as we can possibly get it in this particular part of the world, we're satisfied that it's an appropriate location and we're happy to recommend approval Chair, but happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Again, I don't see anybody indicating, so can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, any comments or amendments from members? No? Thank you, in which case Chair, your vote.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Conception.
Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Thank you councillor Marat. Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you, and lastly councillor Juarez. You're on mute please councillor Juarez.
Sorry, sorry again Michael, agreed.
Thank you, that's excellent, thank you councillor Juarez. That confirms therefore the outcome of the vote, which is unanimous, and that application is approved on that basis, and that concludes the items today and I'll revert to the Chair for closing comments and remarks. Thank you.
Thank you everyone for coming today and being clear about where people have had to come in late and go off a bit earlier. There was only seemed to be one little glitch today and that was because somebody had a live stream going on in the background. Just hope that, you know, people are aware of that and it doesn't happen again. But I think it's going really well so far and thank you to all the officers concerned in making it a smooth process for us all. I'll see you all again hopefully in a fortnight's time. Have a good day.
Thank you Chair, thank you members.
Thank you, that concludes.